Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission Work Session. Everyone, I'd like to take a minute and welcome back to the Portsmouth Planning Department. Interim Director, Ms. Adouma. It's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Would you like to start?
Yes. The first two cases, Z2204 and UP2214, have been withdrawn. So those two cases have been withdrawn. Do you want to move to the next case, or did you want?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next case is UP2220, Prentice Place. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervin.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I am Amy Mervine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This use permit application before you today is a request for a group living halfway house located at 1820 Prentice Avenue. The property will be combined with 1810 and 1816 Prentice Avenue for a combined lot size of 0.29 acres. There you go. The subject property is in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district. The property contains an existing two-story structure originally constructed in 1905 and approximately 1,886 square feet in size with grassy area and gazebos and storage sheds. To the north and east across Prentice Avenue are residential type uses zoned multifamily urban residential URM. To the south abutting and across Leaking Street are residential type uses zoned URM as well. To the west is a group care home zoned neighborhood mixed use and MU. The project narrative description is in line with the city's zoning ordinance definition for a group living halfway house. The applicant indicates the halfway house will be utilized for providing accommodations and supervision for veterans reentering society after completing treatment for drug and alcohol addiction at another Safe Harbor facility. A maximum of eight veteran residents will reside at the property with one house manager who will live on site. All residents must be at least 45 days free of any use of drugs or alcohol and subject to routine testing. No treatment is provided on site, but residents will attend day treatment at Safe Harbors facility located at 3516 Queen Street. The alternative parking plan and elevations includes installation of an Americans with Disability Act ADA compliant access ramp. A new access point from Prentice Avenue with the required off-street parking is shown on the alternative parking plan, one of which is on-street parking and has been approved through the engineering department. A bus route is located on Elm Avenue and Effingham Street for nearby public transportation around Portsmouth. The property is designated on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan as a mixed residential corridor. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request with the recommended conditions. With the conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan, is appropriate in this location, and compatible with the surrounding area. To my knowledge, no public comments were received in regards to this application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mervine. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
And I don't, I really don't think you can answer. I assume the person is here representing?
The applicant. Yeah, they'll be up here.
Okay. Okay. My question really has to do with staffing about, and you're saying with what we are doing for the use permit, one staffed person for a 24-hour, seven-day facility is considered adequate. Is that correct?
That's what they put on their project narrative, but that would be a question to ask the applicant.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Commissioners, any other? Commissioner Hines?
Yes, thank you for the report. I saw on the project narrative there's some rehabilitation that's taking place on the inside. Is there any scheduled rehabilitation for the outside as well in terms of, you know, sprucing it up, staying within the character of the neighborhood? Any of that type of information you could share with the community?
Not at this time. The only thing with the elevations was just they were showing the ADA ramp that they're going to install.
So there's no schedule for requiring for painting or anything of that nature? They're just going to just basically move in as it is and then do the interior usage as well?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. I'd ask the applicant if they're going to do any painting or anything, but didn't indicate it on the project narrative, so.
And then the second question is, in the inside of this show, two ADA spaces on the first floor. I would assume with the beds is what I'm counting there.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any sort of requirement for halfway houses or any ADA requirements for the number of beds in addition to? So that would basically cap out the number of potential people with disabilities at two for this facility without any additional ADA retrofitting of the ability? Is there any problem with that? I guess is the question I have with that.
I'll refer to Jocelyn or Meg.
So there's no requirements about ADA like that in the zoning ordinance? There may be some things on the statewide with the licensing or in the building code, but there's nothing in the zoning ordinance about that?
Thank you.
So are we to adhere to the drawing or to the standards that are in the package? Because in the drawing, it has 10 beds, and I believe it was said that there were eight. So which is it?
Plus one manager.
Yeah, plus one manager. It's nine.
Yeah, that'd be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
And if I might add, I believe that you, did you have any in the conditions or is there any limitation on the number? Did you have that in the proposed conditions?
I did put in the proposed conditions, number two, no more than eight residents shall reside at the property at one time and a minimum of one house manager shall live on the premise.
Can you repeat that last part? The one house manager?
Oh, yeah, I can repeat number two.
Please.
No more than eight residents shall reside at the property at one time and a minimum of one house manager shall live on the premise.
Thank you.
No problem.
So are you considering the house manager a resident?
I wasn't.
Yeah, I think in terms of that, that's for the clients, you know, would be the residents would be the clients, and then the house manager would be in addition to that.
Okay, so they could have.
Commissioner Coleman, did you have a question? Okay, all right.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mervine.
You're welcome. So I'm just going to stay up here. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I am Amy Mervine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This rezoning application is being considered concurrently with a use permit application to develop a multifamily dwelling development. This presentation will focus on both applications. Consideration of the use permit application is contingent upon a recommendation of approval by Planning Commission on the rezoning request. Each application will require a separate vote. Rezoning and use permit applications for a comparable request at 2216 and 2220 Waldron Avenue were previously approved three to one by Planning Commission on October 5th, 2021, and denied four to three by City Council on November 23rd, 2021. City Code requires 12 months from the date of denial before another application for substantially the same change may be filed. These applications were submitted subsequent to the required waiting period. The rezoning and use permit applications before you today involved a combined approximately 2.4 acre parcel located at 2216 and 22 Waldron Avenue. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the area from its current designation of urban residential UR to multifamily urban residential URM in order to develop the property at a higher density. The maximum density in UR is 12 dwelling units per acre, while the maximum permitted density in URM is 25 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is 18 dwelling units per acre. A multifamily dwelling development requires a use permit in the URM zoning district. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting a use permit for the proposed use. The site is vacant with dense vegetation. A portion of 2216 Waldron Avenue, the larger of the two properties, is partially encumbered by non-title wetlands. As part of the development process, the applicant will be required to obtain the required U.S. Army Corps of Engineer permit prior to site development. The surrounding area consists largely of residential uses. To the north and west of the properties is Lincoln Military Housing Complex, which consists of duplex and triplex homes zoned URM. Abutting 2220 Waldron Avenue to the west at 300 Waldron is vacant land zoned UR. Ansel Gardens Apartments, which, sorry, Ansel Gardens Apartments, I forgot to click over to. Ansel Gardens Apartments contains three two-story dwellings with 80 units zoned URM, is located to the east, and single-family residents are located to the south zoned UR. The proposed development includes one two-story and one three-story building with a total of 39 dwelling units and a community room. The proposed development is an expansion of the neighboring Ansel Gardens Apartments. This proposal has been modified from the previous use permit application UP-21-16. The new conceptual site plan shows the multifamily dwellings located 30 feet from the southern property line abutting the single-family residences. The previous plan showed the buildings approximately 20 feet from the southern property line. This new configuration includes 66 off-street parking spaces, which provides the required off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit required by the zoning ordinance. This use permit application also differs from the previous use permit request by proposing the installation of a six-foot vinyl fence along the southern property line abutting the single-family residences. The conceptual plan indicates that stormwater will be handled underground. The following slides show the architectural renderings of each facade of the proposed development. The exterior of the structures consists of red and brown toned brick masonry, hardy shingle siding, vinyl windows, and asphalt shingle roofs. Each building will be constructed with breezeways containing the stairwells to access each floor. Apartment units will include either a porch or balcony with pipe and tube vinyl clad aluminum railings. Rezoning the property from UR to URM will allow the proposed multifamily development to be built at a higher density. The use permit request for a 39-unit multifamily dwelling development would provide needed housing on a vacant property in a manner that is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. This proposed expansion of Ansel Gardens Apartments is appropriate and is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of both the rezoning and the use permit request with the recommended conditions. To my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding these applications. I will now stand by for any questions. I know a lot was going on.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Mervine? Commissioner Hines?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. In the conditions, I was just wondering if we should, it looks like there might be some tree clearing and things of that nature. Should we put something in there? Because we're going to be working in a neighborhood, in many cases, in people's backyards. Should we put something in there for the time of work, time of construction? Or does a other state, a city code take over for that? That says they can only work during a certain number of hours, you know, in a day. I know they're going to want to get these things built as quickly as possible, but we also need to make sure we're good neighbors as well, being that we're so close to people's backyards.
To my knowledge, I don't think there's anything in our code that says anything. That would be a question for the applicant on their timeline. I'll also defer to Meg.
So the noise ordinance, which is not in the zoning ordinance, the noise ordinance will address how early and how late heavy equipment can be utilized and what the, you know, the decibel level that is permitted. So that pretty much is going to restrict that they won't be able to go into the early morning hours and late in any, you know, anywhere where they're close to residential properties.
So this is not an item that we need to put into our conditions? The other ordinance should override that or take care of that for our neighbors? Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other? Commissioner Page?
So during construction, and this is maybe something we need to ask the contractors or the company themselves, are they going to be cutting off any of these adjacent streets to get to that property during that timeframe? Because it's.
Amy, can you put the map back up?
It's not that, I'm already not in love with.
So they'll be coming from Ansel Avenue, which comes off of George Washington Highway.
Right.
So they won't be accessing, there's no other access, there's no other road access to the property other than that cul-de-sac.
And then that leads to my next question, because that's the only outlet from that apartment complex. That one little, that's it? Okay.
Commissioners, any more questions? Commissioner Hines?
I do have a follow-up question. Can you put the elevation back up, if you don't mind? So are we not required to put, I didn't see it in the packet, so forgive me if I overlooked it in 156 pages we reviewed, but I did not see an elevator in this project. Am I overlooking that, or was there not a plan to put an elevator in for people moving in and out of this development?
It wasn't noted on the plans that were submitted, but you are welcome to ask the applicant as well. But I didn't see it on there. It wasn't noted in the project narrative either, so I assume no.
Yeah, I just think that would make it easier for people to move in and out of and things of that nature, so just want to make sure I didn't miss it. Thank you.
No, you're good.
One more, promise I'm done. In addition to that, oh, you might be, you might be in luck, I might have forgotten my question. Oh, it was good, too. Oh, wow.
Okay. Commissioner Jiggetts?
All right, and really, I just want to just find out if it's a question that we can have answered. What was the reason that council denied it before?
I didn't see a reason. It was just four to three.
We don't normally notate when you start looking at the project request again, the reason why it was denied before?
I did not.
Yeah, in general, neither Planning Commission nor City Council is required to give a reason, and in general, they do not provide a specific reason.
Thank you. Commissioner Page, go ahead.
Last one. Okay. I did not note anything about handicap spaces. Was there, is there anything that speaks to that?
So again, most of that is covered in the building code. They will be required to have handicap parking spaces as part of it. Generally, conceptual plans don't show that, but in the site plan process, they will be required to have the required number of accessible spaces.
Madam Chair, not necessarily a question, but I just wanted to give thanks to staff for researching something for me publicly, give them their public due. One of my very first things was the size of the fence. I was asking staff to research if we could go to an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence, and in typical staff fashion, they got back to me very quickly with a concise answer as to why we could not require that because, you know, for a number of reasons, but I did want to thank them publicly for answering my question on it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
One more. And maybe I missed it. Was there required traffic study for this particular project?
No, there was no TIA conducted for this one. That would be if engineering required a TIA to be submitted during site plan.
Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Mervine, if there's no other questions, where are they going to place the two-story building? Will that be placed behind the single-family homes?
Yeah, so along the southern property line is that, that's where all of the single-family residences. They are up against Greenwood Drive, so that is, most of the backside of the property is either grassy or vegetation with trees. But they are on the two buildings, they're noted for the two-story and then the three-story. And that's going to be set back 30 feet instead of the original 20 feet.
So the two-story building will back up to the single-family versus the three-story? Okay. That was my question. Anyone else?
I do have one final question. In these reviews, I assume the police and fire have had an opportunity to look, and I'm really piggybacking on Mr. Page's question about the one entrance in and one entrance out. Do they have any concerns with that? Have we discussed that at all with any of those individual departments?
These applications are routed to all departments for the comments, and then when staff, does the staff report, we incorporate any concerns they address and that was not addressed at all.
Wonderful. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Good? Okay, thank you, Ms. Mervine.
Thank you.
Next case, CA 2301, staff Julie Chop.
I am Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. On January 10th, 2023, City Council adopted a resolution initiating staff to prepare an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to allow City Council to elect to reconsider denied zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, and use permit applications prior to the end of the one-year waiting period. Currently, the City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance requires a one-year waiting period before applications for the same or substantially the same use permit or rezoning request that are denied by City Council can be resubmitted. Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2286 authorizes, but does not mandate, a waiting period not to exceed one year. The following amendments are proposed to City Code, Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance, to amend the administrative section regarding rezoning applications, to permit City Council to vote to reconsider an application to amend the zoning ordinance text or to amend the zoning map that was previously denied. Also, to amend the administrative section regarding use permits, use permit applications to permit City Council to vote to reconsider an application for a use permit that was previously denied. Both of these administrative sections are proposed to be amended to include the procedural process for the reconsideration of denied applications. The following process is proposed. The motion to reconsider an application must be made at the City Council's initiative, not the applicant's initiative. The motion to reconsider an application must be approved by a majority vote of a quorum of City Council members. The motion to reconsider an application must be made at a meeting following the meeting at which the application was denied. The reconsideration does not require any action by Planning Commission. An additional City Council public hearing is required to reconsider the application. The public hearing must be advertised in accordance with state and city requirements. Following the public hearing, City Council will vote to either approve or deny the application. Applications are not eligible for reconsideration if one year or more has passed since the date the application was denied. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance, Chapter 40.2 of the City Code, in order to grant City Council the flexibility to reconsider denied applications prior to the end of the one-year waiting period. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Commissioners, any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Hines?
Is the applicant in any way, so if council, for example, takes an action and says, you know, we don't like it for this reason, and it's a legitimate reason or sound reason type of thing, does the applicant have an opportunity to amend their application and then do that after they say council wants to have another, you know, bite at the apple, per se, but they want them to change this one thing or this one thing that's hanging up the body? Are they allowed to do any sort of amendment to their application in that period of time?
That is a very good question that I would rather the city attorney address.
I think the answer to your question, Mr. Hines, is that, no, not under this process. The application would not be amendable. That would not prevent council at the vote adding additional conditions to use permit that may not prevent proffers from being added in accordance with the rules for adding proffer, and there are certain complicated timing rules on that. But, no, fundamentally, this is to bring forth the same application and have it reheard by council. If the applicant were to amend the application, you'd be talking about going back to the beginning of the process, starting over with Planning Commission review, and then up to council.
So, you know, I guess my question would be, is, I think the kind of intent, maybe, I'm not a council member, so maybe I shouldn't be speaking through their intent, but I would imagine that if, could we provide greater flexibility and still be within the legal limits of state code, I guess, to allow, or city charter, to allow them to have kind of the express way back in if the project is, you know, one item holding something up? You know, I think it'd be very pro-business if we kind of allowed, you know, something there, maybe, you know, you know, some length which to great, to allow greater flexibility for our council. That's just my thought, but maybe, is that even an option for us?
Well, I think it could be done. I don't think that's the amendment that council was asking for through this initiation, but I think that certainly that could be done in a couple of different ways. One, through amending the waiting period itself to allow applications to come back sooner than a year period, or the other, to establish some sort of amendment that allows council to allow applicants to reapply, you know, within the one-year waiting period. There's some complexities to that, so I wouldn't recommend trying to act on that today, but if that's something that the commission wants considered, that can be, that can be done also.
I guess it's safer just to wait for a direct report from council on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
I have a comment to Attorney Miller, because if they, if we were to amend, or if they were to amend it, that would result in it having to come back to the Planning Commission, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions from Ms. Chop? Thank you, Julie.
Is Benchmark Consulting Firm here? Okay. Please identify yourself, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Jason Epley of Benchmark Planning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My colleague, Dan Douglas, is also here this afternoon, and we've had the opportunity, if you're out on High Street today, you might have seen us walking around with maps, you know, looking around, so we were those strange characters out there today. Just want to provide you an update. Our firm is based in Charlotte, North Carolina. Dan works out of Raleigh. We've been working with the planning staff over the last few months on this study. You may be aware of the downtown D2, uptown land use study that was completed in 2017. If you recall, there were a lot of zoning changes that came from that study. The innovation district overlay was completed in 2021. And basically, the area we're looking at is London Boulevard. area we're looking at is London Boulevard to the north, to the south County Street, and to the west is Martin Luther King Freeway, and to the east downtown. So, that's the basic study area. And city staff, over time, continued to look at the area and determined that a master plan was needed through an RFP process, partnered with our firm to work on the study. And basically, it's a community planning process to look at this area a little bit more in-depth than the land use study. We're actually looking at, you know, economic development strategies, how to, you know, promote reinvestment in the area beyond just land use. I guess, can everybody see that? See, I didn't know if you have it in front of you. But why this area? Why did the city look at this area? Number one, there's a lot of available land for redevelopment along the corridor. There's a significant amount of publicly-owned land to go along with that. The city's fiber optic ring runs through the area. You know, we know it's not active yet, but it still is an asset for the future. You know, the linkage to the port, very close to PMT and VIG, considerable public and civic activity with the health center, social services. There's a lot of new building and activity on that end of the corridor. And as I mentioned, there's a real strong need for reinvestment along High Street and in that entire area. Some of the locational assets, obviously central, centrally located in Portsmouth, near downtown, near Norfolk, direct access to the ports. You know, you've got the nearby institutions with the Naval Hospital. There's not a lot of connections to some of these institutions and the neighboring academic institutions. There's still strong assets for the corridor. The planning process, we actually began in spring of last year, working with staff to identify some specific areas for further study. Over the last, you know, six, seven, eight, nine months, we've been working on, you know, we almost completed with Phase Two, which is our assessment of the district, and it's really trying to uncover the potential. What is the potential development in this area? And then Phase Three, we're, you know, wanted to talk to you all before we move into Phase Three, just so you're aware, you know, we're really going to start reaching out to the community and holding visioning sessions to get some input on the future for the district. And then finally, we'll work on the master plan, and we anticipate that will be completed, at least the draft, by the end of the year. So, we've got plenty of time to have some interaction with you all and learn some more about some of your ideas as we're moving forward. So, we have about 160 pages of research that I'm not going to go over today. I'm just going to hit some highlights. That will be available soon, that report, for you to be able to go through the assessment. Today, we're mainly just hitting some highlights of the study. We followed the Brookings Institute guidelines as we're looking at the innovation district, critical mass, innovation capacity, diversity and inclusion, quality of place, leadership. We also conducted a physical development analysis that we're still completing, and a SWOT analysis, which you're probably very familiar with that. The census geographies, the district, there are about four different tracks actually touch the district. We did look at block groups. We looked at the metro area. So, the analysis, some of the data I'm getting ready to present crosses all those different geographies. We have some data that covers the metropolitan statistical area, the city, and the census block groups. So, critical mass, and that's really looking at where are the highest concentrations of economic activity. We did look at employment density as one of those factors, and as you can see, Portsmouth and Norfolk, right there in the center of the map of the MSA, is really where you find a lot of your greatest density. There may be more jobs and businesses in Virginia Beach, but it's a larger area. It's more spread out, but you have more density of that in Portsmouth and Norfolk. The number of jobs has increased in the MSA over the last decades, decades. So, if you look at that entire boundary of the blue, it does dip into North Carolina a little bit there, although in the innovation district, jobs have slightly decreased in that area. Looking at commuting patterns, and if you look at the entire 757 region, the commutes are really low compared to most of the country. People tend to live closer to their jobs in this area than a lot of places, and that map there shows where commutes, you know, basically, people that are commuting to Portsmouth in the district, the darker the colors for more people live. Then, if you look at residential density, densities are higher in Portsmouth, Norfolk, and Newport News than the rest of the MSA. They show up in that darker brown, brownish-red color in the center. Residential occupancy has increased in half of the census blocks in the innovation district, that area that we showed at the beginning, but, you know, net gain of about 250 people. Looking at available property that I mentioned, all the property that is in green, those are undeveloped parcels, although some of that has been developed since we did this analysis. There has been some new development, but it's still very, a lot of land is still open and undeveloped in the area. And then the map on the bottom, that darker shade of blue shows city-owned and EDA-owned properties. That light shade of blue shows public housing at the wharneyed properties. And I'm sorry, I clicked through that kind of quick, but you can see what I was talking about at the beginning. There's a lot of, you know, publicly-owned land and a lot of undeveloped, underutilized land. Industries and employment, healthcare and social assistance is the leader, followed closely by educational services, retail trade, and administrative support and waste management. Business startups, so one thing we've been learning about, there's a real strong business startup culture that's happening in Hampton Roads right now. A little bit of it's going on, as you notice here, with Bloom, Incubhub, and some things like that. But really, if you look across the region, there are a lot of different things going on with maker spaces, other co-working, commercial shared kitchens, where if somebody wants to start up a culinary business but just doesn't have enough money to take grandma's cookies to the shelf yet, they could, you know, go into this commercial kitchen and have access to that. So, there's a lot of interesting things going on. If you're not aware, as, once we have the report out to you, you'll be able to look there and see. There's just a tremendous amount. In fact, one of your investment groups in Norfolk, the 757 Angels, it's a network of investors, and I think it's like the top three in the country for funding business startups. So, it's a lot of great things happening. So, what is your overall capacity for innovation? You know, what are the strengths, clusters, and opportunities? As you can see here, there are a number of research and development and research labs across the area, but none of those are located in Portsmouth. Doesn't mean Portsmouth can't benefit from that and have some spinoff, but none of those are currently located in the region. There have been more than 100 patents, you know, come out of these different organizations in the MSA. What are the research strengths? You know, health and medical fields are always at the top. You know, computer and information sciences is growing. Obviously, defense industry, there's, you know, that's, this region depends on that tremendously. So, there's a lot of, pretty much any business category related to the defense industry is doing well in the region. Agricultural products and food processing, and then certainly resiliency and wind energy, those are emerging industries in the region. Looking at opportunities, and these are within the entire city, not just the district, things that are doing well and have upward GDP trends, you see on the screen there, construction, transportation, warehousing, durable goods, finance, government, professional business services, education, healthcare. So, there's a number of great industries with opportunities within the city that are, you know, forming clusters. Looking across the region, we had mentioned, you know, wind energy and resiliency. Those are certainly growing and, you know, beginning to get established. Logistics, port operations, warehousing, cybersecurity is growing, water technology, and certainly shipbuilding and repair, obviously, just look across the river, that's something that's, you know, always going to be a strong industry here. Diversity and inclusion? So, what is the baseline measures of diversity? Where do disparities exist? And looking at the district, 50% of the innovation district workers are Black, African-American, and that's 10 to 20% higher than the city and the MSA. 62% of the innovation district workers are female, and that's 10% higher than the city and MSA labor force. And these are just snapshots. We have more data that will be in the report. Portsmouth has a higher portion of minority-owned and women-owned businesses than the entire MSA. That is 2012 data, but based on our observations and interviews over the last few months, we feel like that's still true. 50% of the businesses in the city were minority-owned in 2012 compared to just 31% across the entire MSA. 43.5% of businesses in Portsmouth were women-owned in 2012 compared to 39% across the MSA. You know, some of the things we did look at, poverty and income, it is significantly higher in lower income in the innovation district than the city and the MSA, and you can see the numbers there. The poverty rate, 51.9%, 16.8% in the city, 11% across the region. So, that's certainly something to note as we move forward, looking at the study area as well as the median household income as well. So, those are two areas that are definitely challenges for the district. Quality of place, does the district possess an adequate level of internal connectivity? And hopefully, you're all aware of the recent $19 million grant that was awarded to improve High Street through the RAISE grant. There are good sidewalks in the region, but there are challenges, and some of the maps will show, I think Dan will show later, will show some of the pedestrian safety issues in the district. And so, we're very excited about the $19 million grant to improve, you know, that main corridor coming out of downtown on High Street. So, it's a great opportunity for the city, and it's good timing as we're moving into this study, looking at ways to encourage reinvestment in that area. Quality of place barriers, there are physical and visual barriers. You know, just to mention, there's, you know, there's a cemetery. You can't, not a lot you can do about that. It's there. You can't really cross through it. You know, you can't drive through it. It's there. The industrial areas to the south with the railroad tracks, you know, those are physical and visual barriers. You know, the freeway, although you can go under that and there are pedestrians, you know, it's still a visual barrier when you see, you know, a highway like that. And the high school, it's not a, a high school's not really a barrier, per se, but, you know, you don't just randomly walk through the high school grounds to get from one side of the neighborhood to the other. So, those are some of the physical barriers across. Okay, here we go, pedestrian safety. So, there's been over 20 pedestrian crashes from a seven-year period, 2015 to 2022. You know, there's definitely some improvements that can be made, and once again, that's why we're excited about the High Street improvements that will, you know, add safety measures for pedestrians, bikes, because a lot of people walk in that corridor. If you note, you know, the incomes and the poverty, a lot of folks don't own cars, and so they have to walk, and there's, you know, if you've ever had to walk on High Street, that's a really wide section of road to cross. And so, it's no surprise that there's been a number of pedestrian incidents with vehicles in that area. The district really lacks a lot of program public space. There are open, if you've driven through there, you've seen big fields of grass, you know, and some other, you might think, well, gosh, there seems to be a lot of open space, but there's not a lot of park space. There are some limited areas right around the freeway where there's some leftover land where the city was able to, you know, activate that and make those properties more attractive. There's some park benches, and so there's some green space there. Cemetery is certainly a green space, and there's the Turnpike Park with the basketball courts. But really, other than that, there's not a lot of opportunity right in that boundary for public space and gathering. You know, I mentioned the fiber ring. This is just an approximation to kind of show you where it cuts through the district, mostly, you know, right around London Boulevard, and, you know, still, once again, has not been turned on yet, but that is a definite asset for the future. Mentioned Bloom co-working space, and I don't know if you've had a chance to go there, but it's really exciting to talk to people that are starting businesses and excited about their future in the city, and this is a incubator, if you will, for them to get their feet on the ground, get their business started. And once again, as I mentioned, this is happening all over the region to encourage small business startups. Leadership, and Dan's going to come up here and talk at the next slide. The city, you know, it's mostly been the city, the EDA, you know, leading a lot of the initiatives in the corridor. Dan and I have fortunately been able to talk to about 70 different, you know, folks in the, you know, have businesses or organizations in the region or other stakeholders that are invested, property owners. We talked to some business owners out in that area as well, and there's definitely interest of people wanting to have, you know, form some leadership in. So, I think there's definitely capacity for that. You know, hopefully, this process is going to lead to that vision and direction that's really needed. And so, Dan's going to talk a little bit about who we talked to, and just click that to the right.
Thank you. Again, my name is Dan Douglas, and what I'm going to summarize here is what we heard in these listening sessions. This is not us reporting out what we feel as consultants. This is what the leadership groups and the business groups and the folks at Bloom and neighborhood groups, everybody that we met with, these are sort of the key points that they repeatedly brought up in the listening sessions. We held the in-person sessions on the 17th and 18th and met with that group of people, business, as I mentioned, education, nonprofit, community-based organizations, residents, elected officials, everybody we could think of. We held two days of meetings every hour. Another group would come in, and then we did a whole different group, a number of virtual listening sessions in October or November, following up. On the first group told us other people we should try and talk to, so we tried to reach out to all of them. And we've held, and even today, we're holding more meetings, December, January, February. We really like to listen. It's not our plan. It's the plan for people in Portsmouth. I'm starting out with, these were some of the negative perceptions that we heard, and you, I'm sure, are mostly familiar with. There's a perception that Portsmouth is not as safe as other cities in the region. There is a new homeless support center being planned behind the public health office. There is a little bit of nervousness about that. The tunnel is perceived as a barrier, you know, between the city and Norfolk and over the region, and there's a perception that Portsmouth has, you know, a higher property tax rate than some of the other cities in the region. The general comments now, most participants thought this was the great, a great area to look at in innovation district and redevelopment, that there is a need for investment and reinvestment in this area of the city, and that building off the success of downtown, it makes a lot of sense to sort of focus here. Large amounts of land available, and the new streetscape is a real catalyst, we think, that's going to help encourage the private sector to take another look at this area. When public investments are made, it often catalyzes a new look from the private sector. The fiber ring and the ocean landings coming in, they have significant potential in the region. It's not known yet what the full impact will be. I've been on a number of calls relating to the fiber ring and the new landing cables and with economic development, the Regional Economic Development Agency, and, you know, they're still feeling out what the economic impact of that might be, but I can only see that as positive. There are two great co-working locations. Bloom is very nice. If you haven't been to that co-working location, it's quite impressive. And then Norfolk has a sort of a successful startup culture. We spent the whole day yesterday trying to see what the competition is doing. We went to the 757 maker space, the CoLab, and they have multiple co-working locations over there. And of course, the chambers have small business development activities that go on all the time. Transportation, High Street is currently too big. It's too much road for the amount of traffic it carries, so the new streetscape will narrow that down from four lanes to two, put in a median, provide alternate sidewalk and bikeway transportation, so make it more of a multimodal corridor. Right now, it's pretty much focused on cars. The greenways don't connect through the district. We heard many times that the greenways don't connect through the district very well right now. We heard from the development community that sometimes it can take a long time to get the special use permit for multifamily housing, and that that can slow the approval process. They'd love, you know, as every developer would, for the process to go faster. I'm sure you hear that all the time. New workforce and mixed income housing, high quality, is being developed in the district on Effingham. We met the team that developed that newest one, and they're looking at another city-owned site, and that's quite an impressive project. We heard that people, that teachers are finding, are having difficulty finding housing in the city, and mostly people felt for the district to succeed, it can't just be one thing. It needs to be a good mix of uses, you know, housing, jobs, all sorts of things, healthcare, that would really diversify the uses in the corridor. You know, we met with a number of folks from the Public Health and Health Agency, and it seems like there is a bit of a cluster of health development here with the new Hampton Roads Community Health Center that opened. It's very well done. They mentioned that there is a need for complementary services that they weren't able to provide in their facility, like podiatry, vision, urgent care, a fitness center, that there's no, currently no birthing center or pediatric service in the city. So, if you want to have a baby and you live in Portsmouth, you can't have it here. You've got to go somewhere else to have it. Concern for a youth wellness center, there was some concern that kids, especially coming out of COVID, were, or some were struggling with mental health issues, and there was really no services provided to them, that it's very hard to attract those types of providers. You know, I mentioned podiatry, vision, urgent care in Portsmouth, and that we heard over and over- we heard over and over again in these meetings that we're a town that has to grow our own, you know, we got to do it up by ourselves, that a lot of other people aren't going to bring it to us, we got to grow our own. And we think, you know, folks thought that they could build off the presence of the Naval Hospital too, which is just outside the district, and, and that there might be a health concentration in this area that, that could grow. Education-wise, people mentioned that there's a lack of major educational institutions in the district and the city, and here we're talking about higher education, the universities, community colleges, that they are not present in our district. Norcom, of course, is there and is an anchor in the community and beloved by neighborhood residents. We heard from the school district representative that they are looking for a new career and technical educational facility, this is where job training would take place, that it's in the early planning stages at the school district level, and that might be in a, an amenity that makes a lot of sense in this district. And then there is, as I mentioned, no tidewater or university presence in the district. There is a perception that rezonings are hard to get in Portsmouth, and that this need for the special use permit is, can sometimes be onerous, that we heard from a number of restaurateurs that getting an outdoor dining permit can take weeks, even months, when it should take hours. We heard also from that same restaurateur group that the meal tax payment system in Portsmouth is antiquated compared to other cities in the region, apparently you can't pay online, you have to come into the city every time to pay your tax. And then we heard from other in the development community that Norfolk has tried this idea to streamline the regulatory review process in the Neon District over there, and sometimes it worked, sometimes it didn't. So these are the key themes that we heard from the community that we should look at, this emerging resilience and sustainability, and this brings in the wind and the light rail, or I mean, not light rail, but light industry and office. As I mentioned, there's a, some pretty strong anchors in the health sort of cluster. And then a desire to look at small business, this is part of that grow our own theme that we heard, that the fiber ring, maybe a shared kitchen, a retail, open market incubator, some smaller, shared, light industrial space, a way for folks in Portsmouth that have an idea to create their own business, to make it easier for them to do that than it is in other regions, to help them do that. You know, about two-thirds of all jobs created in the United States are created by small business, not the big behemoths, it's, it's by small business, the majority of us, including our shop, is a small business. And oftentimes, economic development entities are always hunting the whale, you know, they're looking for that next big company they can bring that's going to provide a thousand or five hundred jobs, and oftentimes, in our experience, cities don't focus enough on small business generation. And the other idea that we heard was, would it be possible to make this a sort of regulatory reform pilot area where some of the rules are loosened or made easier so that we don't have, so that it's a place in Portsmouth that is, you know, attractive to new investment because it's easier to do business there than it is in other places, and a way to test, an area to test ideas on a smaller scale that are not permanent, right? We can try something, a change of the planning or a change to the rules in the district, and try it for a year or two, or a, a business cycle or two, and if it works great, maybe we adopt it citywide, if it's a problem, we can rescind it, it's sort of, the idea is to be able to innovate here, not just on the private sector side, but also on the public sector side, you know, take some risks and try some things from your side of the Then lastly, I'll close up here with a little bit of maps about the physical development. As Jason mentioned, the change in zoning districts occurred from the two thousand seventeen study, the form-based code was removed and traditional rezoning was reintroduced. You all know these categories, I'm sure you see it quite regular in your work here on the commission. The future land use calls for more conversion to mixed use, to less and less of the single-family zoning, to encourage, the other thing it encourages a lot of is neighborhood compatibility, so heights and uses are stepping down and getting less intense, you know, as it comes up against single-family neighborhoods, which we think is, you know, a smart way to do it. And that there's a potential, this is the flood map, you know, coming up from across the Norcom site, you know, there is a presence of flood, you know, floodway in the district there, primarily through the school property and then coming across, you know, High Street. Stormwater is a big issue because of that flood potential, some improvements I think are planned as part of that Raze Grant. When they redo the streetscape, I think there's some new stormwater infrastructure that's going to go in that we hope will help to alleviate some of that issue. As Jason mentioned, there's a fairly extensive sidewalk network, bike routes are limited but present, and the right, the Raze Grant will add additional bicycle infrastructure along High Street, we think that's good. The district is served by five different transit routes, they're in the various colors, pretty good service. This, I got to admit, was sort of alarming to us. In the past seven years, there's been, now, there's dots all over the map, but we're talking about four hundred and eighty crashes within the district in the last seven years, that's a phenomenal amount of, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davis, I am terribly sorry to interrupt you, but our regular session starts in four minutes.
I'm at the very end.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. Again, I apologize for interrupting you.
No, fair enough, fair enough. Yep, so there, there has even been some fatalities, and then, as Jason mentioned, there's been some pedestrian crashes in the district, mostly at intersections, hopefully the streetscape will help with that. There is a concentration of publicly owned land here, so that does provide an opportunity to catalyze redevelopment using assets that you already own. And then there's significant privately held assets that are vacant or underutilized, all in the green, it's, looks like it's about twenty or thirty percent of all the land in the district. And when you combine those together, it starts to identify where are potential opportunity sites on vacant land, city-owned land, or EDA land, and that's those colors there. And just to close, we are sort of wrapping up the, the assessment, and as Jason mentioned, this is a large document, I mean, we started with a hundred and fifty slides, so there's a tremendous amount of information in there, and now we're going to be moving and meeting with Brian later to schedule and think through how to, what is the best way that Portsmouth likes to reach out to residents. Every city sort of does it different, and we're going to schedule over the next sixty, ninety days, at least three public workshops where we invite residents, business owners, property owners in, to test ideas, look at scenarios, and, and listen to what their vision for the district is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Ms. Dumas, is there anything else before we break? I'm sorry, Commissioner Jiggetts has a question for either...
Yes, my question is, my question is not to you, but to the, well, to the gentleman, Jason. It's more of a feedback, when you said about the ship repairing taking place across the water, that is actually not true, and, and, and actually, it, it speaks to a justification as to the reason that we need to have the shipyard renamed from the Norfolk Naval Shipyard to Portsmouth, because because of that, there is that perception that this shipyard that has been in our city since the seventeen hundreds, that it is actually in Norfolk. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that the Norfolk Naval Shipyard is actually in the city of Portsmouth, and that, you know, and that's a key point.
Yeah, I should have.
And the other, I did want to give one more piece of feedback, when you talk about making a special district for different requirements, for like, if startups were to locate there along the High Street corridor, I think that's a, I think that's a wonderful suggestion, but I would also add a caveat, that when those particular businesses grow, that they don't grow outside of our city, that they look to our city first to see if there is available land so that we can retain them in the city of Portsmouth, since we have been giving them special treatment, so to speak, if this goes forward, I would just say that.
I agree, and I hate we didn't have more time to talk about it, I agree with you one hundred percent, you know, those are called sticky businesses, you know, if you help them, you provide them assistance to start up here, that they'll be sticky and stay in Portsmouth, that's the goal, definitely, and I, sorry we didn't have more time to dive into some details, but thank you for that feedback.
You're quite welcome. Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any other questions? Okay, then I believe this concludes our February seventh work session, we will call this one thirty-five, we'll come back, thank you.
I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, February the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, being held in the City Council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Jiggetts.
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Page.
Present.
Commissioner Hines.
Present.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will make the motion to approve the minutes with the correction on page forty-seven, line twenty-one, and I think maybe you can attest to this, it should be impervious and not, and not, and not imperious, so that's my correction.
So Commissioners, on page forty-seven, line twenty-one, the word should read impervious. Are there any other changes, Commissioner Page? Was that it? Okay.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes with a change on page forty-seven, line twenty-one, with a word change. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Jiggetts.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
Five, this, the minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences, our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, March the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at twelve-thirty PM, City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at one-thirty PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to council for action at their March the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time, if you have not already done so. The first two cases, Z dash twenty-two dash zero four and U P dash twenty-two dash fourteen, the applicant has resigned, withdrawn this application. Our first public hearing item, U P dash twenty-two dash twenty, Prentice Place, Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare LLC requests a use permit for a halfway house on the zero point one-two acre property at eighteen-twenty Prentice Avenue in the multifamily urban residential U R M zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential. The property is owned by L. Louise Lucas and is further described as Tax Map sixty-nine, parcel twenty-two. The staff coordinator is Amy Merivine. Will the applicant or representative for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Tim Webb, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare. Our primary location is at twenty-seven hundred London Boulevard here in Portsmouth, two-three-seven oh-seven, and we're here requesting the use permit for eighteen-twenty Prentice Avenue. I'm also accompanied, I should say, by several folks, our land use attorney, Rob Barclay, is here, my associate administrator, Mark Luck, is here, as well as my outpatient director, Latonya Grant, is here. We're here requesting to open what the city of Portsmouth would call a halfway house at the property on Prentice, we in Behavioral Healthcare would call it a sober living house. Safe Harbor, we opened, I opened the facility at twenty-seven hundred London on March the first of two thousand and nineteen, we provide residential care there for adults in recovery from drug and alcohol abuse. We started out with twenty-six beds, we worked primarily at that site with Medicaid patients. When COVID hit and the domiciliary in Hampton closed for our veterans, we began taking a lot of veterans in, and in the interim period, that thirty beds at London Boulevard now serves all veterans with addiction, so we have them in residential care for forty-five days. We also operate eighteen-nineteen Elm Avenue, which is directly behind the Prentice site. We do residential treatment there for community-based folks, we work with Medicaid patients there, we have some overflow of veterans at that site as well. Then we operate the old dialysis building across from Maryview on, Hospital on Queen Street, we run a partial hospitalization program there, again, for adults with addiction. So it's, it's kind of like a day treatment program, people will come at eight-thirty in the morning, we'll treat them until two-thirty in the afternoon, providing transportation, back and forth, breakfast and lunch. And then we also operate an intensive outpatient program, which is three hours a night, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday evenings, at the Queen Street location. One of the things that we have found, whether it be with Medicaid patients or with our veterans, is that we can do wonderful care with you for forty-five days, we can provide you with wonderful outpatient care, but if you don't have a sober place to live, it makes recovery extremely difficult for people. So what we'd like to do is open eighteen-twenty Prentice as a sober living house or halfway house, as, as our zoning ordinances here in Portsmouth would call it, for up to eight veterans, who would be, all of them would be in recovery for at least forty-five days, clean and sober, before we would ever consider putting them in that house. Would be staffed by a house manager, who would be onsite all the time. As part of the recommendations from our planner, who was recommending the use permit, she wanted us to go ahead and make sure we install video surveillance, which we'll do, so we'll have twenty-four-hour a day video surveillance on the exterior, we'll do random urine drug screens with everybody on a weekly basis, and again, we'll have that house manager that would be there. I would anticipate having folks there for at least six months, if not a year to year and a half, because part of being in that halfway house would include going to our outpatient program on Queen. So we would pick them up in the, in the morning, take them to Queen, they could have breakfast, they could have treatment, they could have lunch, bring them back in the evening, and then they would be working on their own sober living skills throughout the rest of the evening, cooking dinner as a group, participating in activities together as a group, again, under the supervision of the house manager. As I said, we've been here since two thousand and nineteen, since March one, I'm a big believer that if we're going to work in Portsmouth, if I'm going to work in Portsmouth and, and earn a living in Portsmouth, I'm going to be in Portsmouth, so I live in Portsmouth, I actually could walk to my house and, or my apartment in five minutes from here. All of our operations are in Portsmouth, we use local Portsmouth vendors for a lot of things, I try to, try to keep everything that we do here in town, because I know if we're going to, again, if we're going to make money here, we need to be a part of the community. We've met with the Brighton Prentice Park Civic League, they are, everyone there was fully supportive of what we're doing. As community partners, we've done a number of things to try and help folks, we've done some supportive work with one of the local churches, supporting an AAU basketball team, we've done bookbag drives over at London Oaks, we've done some meals for folks at Thanksgiving over in the, over our Elm Avenue site, and as of last night, we agreed to sponsor a couple of kids in the summer camp program through the PALS program with the Portsmouth Police Department. So we want to be good neighbors, I think we have been good neighbors since we got That's really it, I don't want to waste your time or pontificate, what questions would you have of, of me and of what we want to do?
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, and I'm sorry, tell me your name again, please.
Yes, it's Tim Webb.
Okay, Mr. Webb, as I was reading through your application, the first question that jumps out at me is, how is it possible to run a twenty-four-seven facility with only one person? I just, I'm just trying to get my arms around how your... I just, I'm just trying to get my arms around how your operation is able to do that.
So, I'd like to kind of step back from that and think about the continuum of care that we offer. So, depending upon what someone's using, if they're drinking heavily, then they may need detox. If they're using an opioid or benzodiazepine like Xanax, they may need detox. Once you've come out of a detox program, basically a hospital setting, for anywhere from three to fourteen days, the next level of care down would be residential treatment, which is what we provide at Elm Avenue and what we provide over at London Boulevard. That's where we're going to have them with twenty-four-hour-a-day staff that are awake the entire time. They're going to have multiple staff there, they're going to have nursing staff there, they're going to have therapy on a daily basis. After forty-five days of treatment there, all of our veterans anyway, because that's all we would put in this house, would be veterans, after forty-five days, they're ready to step down to the next level of care. So from a treatment perspective, it would be that partial hospitalization program. So they're going to be in that program for eight-thirty in the morning to two-thirty in the afternoon, but they need a place where they can stay overnight, where they can live, so to speak. So, at that level of care, there's less of a need for multiple staff. So, we would have the one staff member who would be a house manager, who would be there to take care of anything going on in the house and supervise them. Five days a week, they would be over at Latonya's program on Queen Street. This model has been, this model is actually more intensive than what a lot of other people wind up doing. There's something called an Oxford House. Oxford is nonprofit, they're international, and they do sober living homes where there are no staff. So it's a self-governing house, and the people who are in the house either vote you in or they vote you out. They do drug screens and that type of thing, and they've been pretty successful. I would rather give a more intensive level of supervision by having a house manager there, having the video surveillance, those types of things, because I think that can be a very successful model.
So you don't see a problem with just having one staffer there?
No, ma'am. I don't see a problem with that.
And I'm just going to be, what about if the manager gets sick? How do you?
If the manager were sick, I would have someone else come over.
Okay.
So I, we have, right now, I've got about seventy-five staff, all told, and we have enough, what I would refer to as behavioral health technicians, that if I needed to send somebody over there, I could do that. The person who would be taking them back and forth even to Latonya's program on Queen Street would be one of our drivers, who's based out of London. So they're going to have a lot more support than just a house manager. Anytime either Latonya or I need to go over there, we can. Any of our outpatient programs, and that would include even the sober living house or halfway house, Latonya will be supervising that and would be supervising the house manager.
Okay, and then this is my last question, and I'm just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
With your treatment, do you offer to the veterans or the other persons in your program, the prescription drug that actually, when someone who's addicted to alcohol, when, if they were to, say, fall off the wagon, per se?
Right.
That particular prescription drug makes them violently sick, so that they would in no way want to consume alcohol? Do you all offer that?
So, we don't offer Anabuse, which is the medication that you're describing. We do offer medication-assisted treatment. So for our opioid-addicted folks, we will, we offer Suboxone if they want that, and for our alcohol-addicted folks, we can give them Vivitrol. Vivitrol will cut the cravings that they have for alcohol, and you won't enjoy the benefits, so to speak, of alcohol if you drink on Vivitrol. You're not going to have a drive for it, and you're not going to enjoy the effect of it.
Is there any reason why you don't, is there any reason why you don't offer the drug?
The Anabuse?
Yes.
It's, at this point in addiction treatment, it's something that has fallen well out of favor because it's considered very, very aversive to folks.
Okay.
And folks, you've got to be compliant with it for it to work. The beauty in something like Vivitrol is it's a monthly injection, and once you've got that injection, it's going to be in your system for the entire month.
When you say injection, you mean like in your arm or something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And the only reason I even know about the prescriptive drug I asked you about is because I happened, one night on Saturday Night Live, it's a person who used to be a full-time actor on there, and there was a story about him saying what got him through it was being on that particular medication, so that to the point, whenever he tempted or fell off the wagon, he would become violently ill because he was taking that medication.
Right.
So that's why I just wanted to ask about it.
Yes, ma'am. I think if you look at the most recent literature and research, you'll find that Vivitrol has much more efficacy to it than would Anabuse, which is part of why it's fallen out of favor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Curry?
First of all, Mr. Webb, as a licensed clinician for over nineteen years, working in the mental health agency, and also as a certified substance abuse counselor, I have been for the last five years, thank you for the work that you guys do. I have studied your company for a long time and follow for a while. Thank you for what you're doing. We're running into a crisis in this particular area because we don't have enough adequate spacing for our people to rehabilitate themselves, so they don't become repeated offenders. So I want to say thank you for what you're doing. I think this is a good gesture, because we're having a crisis all across. Anybody follows, you know, what the Senate and Congress and our local people are doing, this is a major crisis in the tidewater area, especially for veterans and people who are not veterans, who are having a difficult time, who want to recover. But one of the things you understand for substance abuse is to change your people, places, and things.
Yes.
And if they have no adequate living, they're going to go back and use, because it is a coping mechanism for them to go back. That's all they know, that's their recovery, that's how they cope. So my request, mine was simply of a statement, say thank you for the work you're doing, because we need more of this in the city of Portsmouth.
You're welcome. Thank you. Again, I greatly appreciate working in Portsmouth. I've come to love the city.
Commissioners, any other, Commissioner Hines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, a comment, I just want to thank you for involving the Civic League and for not getting a phone call from that league, where they're not getting at least a say in what's happening in their neighborhood. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
The questions I have, I have, there's three questions about the development, just clarifications more than anything, I guess. The floor plan on the first floor calls for two beds there in the ADA area. What happens if you guys receive more persons that require, you know, services or accommodations? Because it looks like there's only the two beds that are part of that floor plan.
Right. I would have to try and help them find alternative housing at that point, because the way that structure is designed, the stairwell is too steep to do much else with. So we would, we'd really have space for the two, and that's really all I would have space for.
Okay. And there's no other ruling documents or anything of that nature that require you to have more density of ADA when you open these houses, state code, federal codes, nothing of that nature?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay. Outside improvements, there's no mention in the packet as to that, and I did actually drop past, are there any outside improvements planned in terms of maybe some landscaping, painting, or anything of that nature, or is it just going to do the inside, and is that the only plan at this point? I mean, I see the elevations, I see the ramps, those types of things. I was just wondering if there was going to be any cosmetic plans there?
So, we don't have any cosmetic plans, as you can see there. That doesn't preclude the idea that we would want to put some bushes out and, you know, some more cosmetic types of things. In fact, I would be all for doing something where the guys in the house could actually help with some of that.
And the reason why I'm asking that is this sense of home, you know, if a person's going to be coming in here for a year, eighteen months, whatever the case may be, you know, pride of the place they're living, you know, kind of thing. So, and then in the, so thank you for answering that. And then there was also, in the packet, says that there's eight persons and a minimum of one person that's going to be the house manager.
Correct.
But again, in the floor plan and the plans there, it looks like there are a total of ten beds. Is the tenth bed there for, just in case you have two house managers, or was this more of a representation drawing and not?
That's more of a representation drawing. My commitment is no more than eight. I don't want more than eight people in that house with the house manager, because I don't want to overstress just the structure itself, the bathrooms, and those kinds of things.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Just in reference to Commissioner Hines, the house manager will be on-site twenty-four-seven. That would be where that person will live? Is that correct?
That person would live there, yes. That's, that is correct.
All right, then, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any, Commissioner Page?
One brief question. You had mentioned that you all transport your residents back and forth to the different programs.
Yes, sir.
But I noticed that you only have one off-street parking. Where, do you all use multiple vehicles to do that? Are you all, is it an SUV, or? Where would they park those vehicles?
They would pull up on the street, pick everybody up, take them, and then the same thing on the way back.
Our residents?
We have a high-capacity van. So, you know, we could get all eight in the van, pick them up, and take them.
Are residents permitted to have vehicles?
They could have vehicles. If they have a vehicle, they could, but we wouldn't necessarily have them park the vehicles there. I have plenty of parking over at London Boulevard, so, like with my Elm Avenue patients, because we have limited parking there, we don't allow any of our patients to park there, we'll have them park at London, and then we'll take them over to Elm, which not only keeps the parking more available for what's needed, but it also means if somebody's got a craving to use, it's a little harder to, you know, you've got to at least go a mile and a half to the other side to get to your vehicle. So I would do the same thing with our veterans.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
I'm curious, on Saturdays and Sundays, exactly what would the residents be doing?
They would certainly be looking to go to an outside AA meeting or NA meeting. Some of them would be working on treatment work. We would certainly have inside AA and NA meetings as well. Probably have some activities where we might go down to Elizabeth River and Fish, we might go to the park, those types of things. They would also engage with the patients that are in our Elm Avenue site. So the way that, I refer to it almost as a compound, Commissioner Jiggetts, because the entire area, we leased the entire area there, so it's all fenced in, so they can, they would then be able to interact with the folks that are in residential treatment at Elm Avenue.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're telling me that even on Saturdays and Sundays, there would be structure?
Yes, ma'am. There would be some structure for them. It would be, it wouldn't be going to a treatment program, but there would be structure for them. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Webb. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P. dash twenty-two dash twenty. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to speak and did not get an opportunity to register, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair.
I saw move.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a motion and a second, a very firm one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve U.P. dash twenty-two dash twenty. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, Z dash twenty-two dash zero-seven, West Craddock. Community Housing Partners request to rezone the combined two-point-four acres at twenty-two-sixteen and twenty-two-twenty Waldron Avenue, from Urban Residential U.R. to Multifamily Urban Residential U.R.M., in order to increase the maximum dwelling units per acre to eighteen. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for a multifamily dwelling development, U.P. dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. The proposed development is an expansion of the neighboring Ansel Gardens Apartments. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property from low to medium-density, single-family residential. The property is owned by Portsmouth Afton Square LP and is further described as Tax Map four sixty-five, parcel thirty-nine, and Tax Map four sixty-five, parcel thirty-eight. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervine. Will the applicant or representative come forward and present your application at this time?
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Rob Beaman. I'm a local land use attorney at the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant, C.H.P. Joining me this afternoon is Mr. Mark Huffman, who is the Director of Land Development at C.H.P. This application involves the existing Ansel Gardens apartment complex, which is located just west of George Washington Highway in the Craddock area of the city that was originally constructed back in nineteen sixty-four. C.H.P., which is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit that's based here in Virginia, has owned and managed this site, together with another nearby apartment complex, for approximately the last twenty years. C.H.P. is known for the quality of its development and also its commitment to sustainable design, and has received a number of recent awards and recognition from a number of groups, including the Virginia Energy Efficiency Council, Virginia Business Magazine, and the Affordable Housing Finance Magazine. C.H.P. is also known for providing a series of resources and services to its tenants that go above and beyond what a normal apartment complex typically provides, including youth and activities and programs, academic tutoring, and senior health and wellness instruction. Given the development's popularity and success over the years, C.H.P. would like to further invest in this property by constructing two additional apartment buildings on the site, totaling thirty-nine additional units. The new buildings would be attractive and constructed with high-quality materials, including brick and fiber cement, and would be designed to meet the EarthCraft Gold Certification Level and the Department of Energy's Zero-Energy Ready Home Requirements. Additionally, as is noted in the staff report that Amy was kind enough to prepare for this application, the proposed expansion is consistent with Comprehensive Plan's goal of providing additional modern and affordable housing options in Portsmouth. And finally, I think it's important to note that the proposed use will be compatible with surrounding land uses, as it's surrounded on the north and the east by additional multifamily housing, and is buffered from nearby single-family residential uses with thirty-foot building setbacks, solid fencing, and then evergreen landscaping. And with that, we certainly thank you for your time and consideration of this application, and we'll stand by for questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Beaman?
Yes, Madam Chair, lady.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes. What would be the, would this be market rent?
These are income-restricted housing. This is part of the LIHTC program. The target incomes for this project would be, I believe it's about forty thousand for an individual, or up to fifty-five, fifty-six thousand for a family.
How much for an individual?
Forty thousand, I believe. Thirty-nine to forty thousand.
And how many units does it give?
This is thirty-nine additional, there are eighty currently. This would be an expansion of the existing apartment complex.
Also, this is a expansion of Ansel already?
That's right. So, yeah, so Ansel's there and has a set of amenities, this would be an expansion of that program.
That's it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
I'm just here- I'm just curious. What was the reason the City Council denied the application before?
Yes, ma'am. I don't recall, and I asked my client that question after the informal session. We don't recall any specific reason. I know that a couple of the neighbors, the single-family homeowners, did appear and had concerns last time. We have done extensive public outreach as part of this application. We held a meeting out at a nearby golf course. We sent letters and have followed up with phone calls. I understand that, I believe, two of the folks that were, had concerns last time are no longer have concerns. We've made a lot of modifications to the application, including the fencing, the additional landscaping, and then setting the buildings back even further from the property line this time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Hines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you for, in between, coming in and answering my question about work hours from 7:30 to 4:30.
4:30, yes, sir.
And I have, and I think a handful of others may have some other concerns, but Ansel Apartments currently, is that at full occupancy now? Or is it partially occupied? I mean...
Full occupancy.
So it's completely full right now? So there is, there is a housing need in that area from what you're saying there?
Yes, sir.
The third, the third-story building, which is off to the side there, there's nothing mentioned in the report, but would there be elevators called for in this?
No elevators. Both buildings are walk-ups. As was mentioned during the informal session, the two-story building has been placed along the property line. It's kind of, it's much lower and kind of consistent with the single-family to the south. And the three-story building would be up against the property line next to the existing Ansel Gardens Apartments.
So does the Ansel Gardens Apartments have any sort of elevators to assist with moving in or out?
No, sir. No, sir, they're walk-ups as well.
I believe there were some other questions about traffic, but I can defer back to anybody that might have those.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions?
And tell me, what would be the name? Will this be Ansel Gardens 2, or is it going to have a different name?
Same.
Yes, ma'am.
What was?
Sir, if you could come up here, please, and identify yourself.
Hello, I am Mark Huffman. I'm the Director of Land Development for CHP. I mean, right now, we're, internally, we're calling it the Ansel Gardens Project because it's adjacent. We haven't put a specific name, different name on it. So, I mean, we would, we could call it something different, but right now, we're, internally, we're still calling it part of Ansel Gardens.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Page?
I'm just a little concerned about the traffic pattern. Did you all have an analysis done for the traffic pattern? Because you're adding 39 units, that's, I mean, or 66 spaces. So if you actually add 66 cars, that's quite a bit of traffic that you're adding to a neighborhood that probably already has traffic itself. Also, the egress, that's the only egress that you have available, is there a reason why?
Yes, sir. Just on the first question, this apartment complex will be serviced from Ansel Avenue. My understanding is the only other, there are only a couple of other uses that are serviced from Ansel Avenue. It's a street that comes behind a commercial center off of George Washington Highway. My understanding is there's sufficient capacity on that street to allow for the number of trips that would be generated by this apartment complex. Only 39 units, so we don't anticipate a great deal of traffic being generated by this, especially through most times of the day. And certainly, it was lower than the threshold for the city. I know the city traffic engineer gets these applications when they're filed, and it was lower than the thresholds that they, they felt they needed a formal study. In terms of access, the sole access is off Ansel Avenue. There are several paper streets around this corridor, but we don't want to have any sort of access or any sort of impact on the single-family homes to the south and to the east. We do, understand we'll need to work with the fire department during the site plan review process. Of course, they get our site plans and they work with our engineers to determine fire access. And because we have so much of frontage on that cul-de-sac and because we own the property next door, there is some flexibility to move things around a little bit if we need to widen the access so it's efficient for fire and that sort of thing. So we fully understand that we're going to need to work with the staff during site plan to address any issues fire has.
Commissioners, anything further? Any questions? Commissioner Jiggetts?
The apartments will also accommodate children, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There are a number of families in the existing apartment complexes. I believe there's even a Brownie troop, and there are quite a few services aimed at children.
Right, but I mean, in the new construction?
In the new, yes, ma'am.
There will be children. Because you know there are a lot of children over there in the Craddock area. So I think that also speaks to the reason for the question about the traffic engineering study, that that is important because of the configuration of Craddock. I was just having a conversation earlier with a fellow commissioner. I can recall that Craddock was the first planned unit development in the nation by Jim Ross before he went on to develop a lot of other projects, including Columbia, Maryland. So we always have to keep in mind that great focus was taken on putting together the Craddock area. So I believe the traffic study is warranted because we have children. We have Craddock Middle School out there also. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
I have one question. Isn't there only one way in and one way out? And that narrow street coming off of George Washington Highway? Or is there a back way coming?
I would have to, I apologize. I don't know if we have an aerial of, I'm sorry, that zooms out a little bit.
Right, so to get to Ansel, you have to go off of George Washington Highway right before you get to Popeyes? That's how I remember. To go in at that light, am I correct? That's only the one way in to get back, am I correct?
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure, yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beeman. Thank you, Mr. Huffman.
Thank you very much.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-22-07. I do have one registered speaker, Mr. William Ponteas. If you would come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Yeah, my name is William Ponteas. I live at 2224 Greenwood Drive. I was one of the individuals who went down and met with them down at the golf course. I don't know who else was there. And at that time, they were talking about moving two buildings away from my area. And if you see where it's rezoned, it bucks right up against my house and my property. The thing I can't understand, I mean, me and my wife can't understand is why they need more additions. Are you well aware that you have over 40 low-income housing facilities in Portsmouth? That's a lot of place. You could almost qualify as a capital of low-house income. But we're, you know, we moved in there in 1990, and we've tried to keep our property up. But now, it's going to be depreciated. We got two different construction places right now. They're selling houses at $200,000 and $300,000, right in Craddock. So this, allowing this, you're going to be putting that right in the middle of it. And I can't see where we can go out in our backyard and have people up on the third, second and third floor looking down at us. We have to be careful. I'm a bowler. I bowl at the AMF. And a lot of the elderly people have the same concerns that I do. There has been more and more break-ins on elderly families while they're home. And they're either hurt, killed, and everything they own is, of value is taken out of there. So they're concerned about it, and so am I. And I think we have enough low-income housing in our area. We have it right at the end of our street. And now we're going to have an additional right at the back of our house. So I'm absolutely opposed to it. I've met, this is the second time, I believe, that I've met on this issue. And since then, my wife went on the computer and checked about what, how many low-income housing projects we have, in excess of 40. Don't you think enough is enough? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ponteas.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-22-07. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Madam Secretary, if Mr. Beeman wouldn't mind coming back up here, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on a couple of things before I move forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Initially, you said that it was going to be 20 feet off of, and then earlier you said it's going to be 30.
The current setback is 30 feet.
Okay.
Staff may have mentioned that the setback last year was 20 feet. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the second-story building will be put in behind the single-family homes?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the height of the, do you know that by any chance?
The height of the...
Two-story?
Of the two stories, approximately 30 feet.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Commissioners? Mr. Hines?
The resident actually does bring up, you know, I'm in favor of expansion, and I'm very pro-business in Portsmouth. But the resident does bring up an interesting question. And I guess the question I would have is, is there any thought of maybe not being as tall where the person can have quality of life to their backyard without somebody looking over and seeing, you know, what they're barbecuing that day or whatever the case may be? Would that impact the number, you know, of homes or units that you could potentially put forth? And, you know, to make sure that we're, again, good neighbors, is there a way we can make this work to where it's not right next to the single-family?
Sure. And just a couple of things on that. I did want to point out, Mr. Ponteas, I believe, lives kind of on the far-left-hand side of the property in the area. You'll see it here, and I wish I had a point, I apologize, but in the area that's not going to be developed. So behind his house is going to stay completely wooded and will not be developed at all. He's, you know, that far-left little parcel is owned by my client, but they're leaving that.
Could you, I'm sorry. Would you mind? Please, thank you very much.
This area here is part of the development, but it's going to stay undeveloped, so it will be completely wooded. And in terms of being up against the single-family homes or near the single-family homes, we really do want to be a good neighbor to those folks. We, and that's why we engaged in the public outreach, both with the last application, this application. And we've tweaked this application to address those issues by moving those buildings back to 30 feet. We're doing a double row of evergreen landscaping, so there's a landscape buffer, landscape, and evergreen trees. So there's a tall landscape buffer all year round that has thickness to block views. We did propose an eight-foot fence originally. My understanding from staff is that that's not allowed under the zoning ordinance, which is why we're at the six feet. But then, the other thing I wanted to point out is these are unusually deep lots. And I think the, these lots are 220 feet, 225 feet deep off of Greenwood. And the nearest house is 150 feet away from the property line. So in addition to the 30 feet, in addition to all the landscape buffering and the fencing, their houses are really set way far back. So in terms of privacy in the backyards, there's a good deal of space between our use and their single-family homes. But we did, we did, I'm sorry, we did do as much as we could to try to accommodate these folks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Correct me if I'm wrong. You did say that the incomes would be $40,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you stated?
This is, we view this as workforce housing. Our primary tenants are teachers, firefighters, police officers, that sort of group and those sorts of incomes. And those are who we're targeting in this type of development. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because that's not really considered low income.
The name of the program that Virginia Department of Housing, or, sorry, the Virginia Housing Development Authority administers is called the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program.
Right.
But that's, and that's kind of how some people kind of, you know, think it's going to be Section 8 or some other types of uses. But this is, this is a program that's aimed at folks who have good jobs and make good incomes. And it's going to be a really high caliber of folks that are there. And the existing Ansel Gardens apartment complex is a really great development with a lot of great people who have, as I said, Brownie troops and different activities and that sorts of thing.
Right, and of course, just because you're low income, you're still a high caliber person.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure I understood you correctly about the $40,000. Thank you.
You need to ask. Want to ask him a question?
No, it's just, I wanted to emphasize what Rob just said to everyone. You know, the way they title the funding of the program with Low-Income Housing Tax Credits, it kind of casts a stigma on what that project, what that's really about. I mean, our target resident makes 60% of the area average median income. Okay? That's, we'll have some at 80, we'll have some at 40. But our target average is at 60. And who those people are, schoolteachers, daycare workers, firefighters, police officers, that's who those people are in that band. And so this is not a focused subsidized housing project. This is for people in that 60% band with a plus or minus. So, I mean, this is a, it's a quality neighborhood with quality living. I happily live in one of these units. It's fine. I mean, they're very, very nice units.
Right, and again, there's no disrespect to people who live in subsidized, who have subsidized housing. So thank you for providing additional input.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Page?
More of a statement, and it is noted that you all plan on installing surveillance, correct?
Yes, sir.
To make sure that this is safe, not only for the neighborhood, but also for the residents.
Yes, sir.
Correction, working surveillance.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Beeman. Thank you, Mr. Huffman. If there's no more, if there's no more discussion, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for Z-2207 for approval, with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam.
Madam Secretary, excuse me, for the rezoning, there's no conditions.
Correction. Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval of Z-2207.
Thank you, Commissioner Page. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cherry. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, UP-22-22 West Craddock. Community Housing Partners request a use permit for a two-building, 39-unit multifamily dwelling development on the combined 2.4-acre property at 2216 and 2220 Waldron Avenue in the Urban Residential UR zoning district. The applicant is concurrently requesting a rezoning from UR to URMZ-22-07. The proposed development is an expansion of the neighboring Ansel Gardens Apartments. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential. The property is owned by Portsmouth Afton Square LP and is further described as Tax Map 465 Parcel 39 and Tax Map 465 Parcel 38. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervine. If the applicant has any additional information? No additional information. Madam Chair, one?
Commissioners, do you have any additional questions of the applicant? Madam Secretary?
Just because, Mr. Ponteas, did you have any additional, okay, comments? No comments? Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-22. If there is someone here who did not get... If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address U P dash twenty-two dash twenty-two, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, with conditions.
To approve?
To approve. I fucking...
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions. Our last item, C A dash twenty-three dash zero-one, Citywide. By request of City Council, the City of Portsmouth proposed to amend City Code, Chapter forty-point-two zoning ordinance, including without limitation, Section forty-point-two dash five-three-two-one, and Section forty-point-two dash five-three-three-one, to allow City Council to elect, to reconsider zoning map amendments and use permits that were previously denied prior to the end of the current one-year waiting period for fulfilling denied applications. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop, and she will also present our case at this time.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I'm Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. On the January tenth, twenty-twenty-three City Council meeting, City Council adopted a resolution initiating staff to prepare an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to allow City Council to elect to reconsider denied zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, and use permit applications prior to the end of the one-year waiting period. Currently, the City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance requires a one-year waiting period before applications for the same or substantially the same use permit or rezoning request that are denied by City Council can be resubmitted. Code of Virginia, Section fifteen-point-two dash twenty-two eighty-six, authorizes but does not mandate this waiting period not to exceed one year. The following slides show the amendments that are proposed to City Code, Chapter forty-point-two zoning ordinance, to amend the administrative section regarding rezoning applications, to permit City Council to vote to reconsider an application to amend the zoning ordinance text, or to amend the zoning map that was previously denied, as well as to amend the administrative section regarding use permit applications to permit City Council to vote to reconsider an application for a use permit that was previously denied. Both of these administrative sections are proposed to be amended to include the procedural processes for the reconsideration of denied applications. The following process is proposed. The motion to reconsider an application must be made at the City Council's initiative, not the applicant's. The motion to reconsider an application must be approved by a majority vote by a quorum of City Council members. The motion to reconsider an application must be made at a meeting following the meeting at which the application was denied. The reconsideration does not require any action by the Planning Commission. An additional City Council public hearing is required to reconsider the application. The public hearing must be advertised in accordance with state and city requirements. Following the public hearing, City Council will vote to either approve or deny the application. Applications are not eligible for reconsideration if one year or more has passed since the date the application was denied. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance, Chapter forty-point-two of the City Code, in order to grant City Council the flexibility to reconsider denied applications prior to the end of the one-year waiting period. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions from the Planning Commissioners.
Commissioner Page?
Just for educational purposes, what was the original intent for the one-year waiting period? Like, was it just, were there administrative things that it takes to, you know, get the whole ball rolling again, or why was there a one-year waiting period?
I'm inclined to say, if there was not a one-year waiting period, then, then somebody could re, apply every day until somehow, like, there would be no...
To control.
Yeah, they could just keep applying.
Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Julie.
I do have one registered speaker, Mr. Mark Yudal Yudroski. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and other neighbors. Before I get into this topic, I just want to say thank you all, members of the Commission and members of the planning staff, for accommodating a request for a workshop on last month's proposed changes. I appreciate the consideration. In the famous, in the famous words of Han Solo, "Chuy, I've got a bad feeling about this." I'm not happy with a change to an existing ordinance that involves essentially throwing out the, the operating principle that is the intro. So, number two, item number two shown essentially negates item number one, and this is all at the whim of a majority of City Council members. There is no case that has to be made for reviewing a decision that has been through two layers of prior vetting. The Planning Commission must have acted and issued a recommendation to City Council. If the language said Council were going to take it up, if the action by Council was contradictory to what the Planning Commission had done, I think it would have a little more credibility. But essentially, anything that four members of Council decide is a reason for reviewing that denial, that's just it. So, as recently happened, we had a changeover of the makeup of Council, and the pocket majority, I call it pocket majority, four votes, that was pretty well guaranteed prior to our last election, that Council could do whatever it wanted, that a new Council came in and that majority evaporated. So, this comes down to, we're going to make changes because we can, not necessarily because there is a guiding principle that's been violated, that there is something that was flawed in the process that the previous Council used. No, just, we have four people lined up here, and we're going to review it. There's also an unfairness to the public, because if something is denied, in many instances, that denial has come after a public process, and many that I have seen have involved neighborhood considerations that were voiced by a fair number of folks coming here at least twice. So, whatever organizing occurred around this will have to be redone, because Council will have a hearing, as they should, at least that much, before taking it up again. It may not be possible to bring all the same public actors together to make the case that they made at the previous two meetings. And lastly, the reconsideration shall not require a recommendation or any other action from the Planning Commission. I don't believe that's a good policy. I think you all represent parts of this community whose voices need to be part of the process, as they were originally. So, for these reasons, I urge you to reject this motion, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mchowsky. Commissioners, are there any questions? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item C A dash twenty-three dash zero-one. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? If not, I believe we're in need of a motion.
Madam Chair, I do, I do have a quick question.
Commissioner Hines, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Gudog Yudroski actually does bring up a, an interesting part that I haven't really thought of when, about the recommendation of the Planning Commission. More time, you know, a lot of times, they go through the Planning Commission usually fine, and then they either meet their fate, their council anyway. However, would it be too, I guess, arduous to the process to add that if it was approved by the Planning Commission, or previously approved by the Planning Commission, it would not need any further action? So if it met denial or recommendation for denial, would that be too much of a burden on staff to have maybe that language added? If it was a yes before, we have no other action. If it was a no before, could it come back to the Planning Commission? I mean, because you're still expediting the one-year process, and really, you're just making one pit stop at the, at the Planning Commission level. Is that a burden on staff, or could that be entertained potentially?
Mr. Miller?
Good afternoon. Yes, Mr. Hines, I, I think that it is possible to entertain something like that. I think that it would be very difficult to actually craft any language to be voted on for that purpose. I, I think what's going to happen with this item, I think there will probably be a briefing to Council before, at the meeting before they would act on this item, to get their thoughts on some of these issues, the issue you raised at work session also. So, my suggestion would be that Planning Commission, if this is acceptable insofar as it goes, recommend approval of the actual amendment, but maybe through an additional motion, recommend that Council consider other items in the final language of the amendment, which could include what you mentioned earlier at work session, and could include remanding to Planning Commission if Planning Commission recommended denial on the original application. Does that make sense? I know that's complicated.
It actually makes, it makes perfect sense. I think this is something that Council ultimately makes the decision on anyway, so, but I think it would be, Mr. Gudog Yudroski, to his point, that we are the citizens that, you know, act as a, an advisory to the, to the City Council, and I think it would be wise for the citizens to have opportunity to reach out to other citizens, not just the elected, to be able to have that, that input should this come back through. So, I certainly think I can trust our Council to make whatever amendments to that as well. So maybe a motion would be to allow for them to wordsmith this as well at their, at their wishing, as long as the intent stays the same.
So, we're just looking for a motion to approve, and then a motion to consider additional verbiage?
Yes, ma'am. Second motion to recommend that Council consider additional...
Council consider?
Additional modifications.
Modifications, thank you, sir. Commissioners, are there, is there any more discussion? No. If not, we are in need of a motion to approve and a second, and then we will have a vote on a additional motion after that.
Madam Chair, I'm moving for the adoption of C A twenty-three dash zero-one.
Is there a second? Commissioners, is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaggs?
No.
Commissioner? Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
Okay, this C A dash twenty-three dash zero-one is approved by a vote of five to one, and one, yeah, five to one. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, we are in need of an additional motion to consider, to Council, to consider adding modifications.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we request City Council to review the items that we discussed, both in our work session and in this session, and to incorporate changes that we potentially discussed as potential modifications to the C A twenty-three dash zero-one.
Second. Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Jaggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved six to zero. It is to consider additional modifications to City Council.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any new business? I do have a question, and Mr. Yudroski brought it up, and this is in reference to the deferred item to March seventh. I believe it was C A dash twenty-two dash zero-one. Mrs. Pedinger, I believe you were, we had talked about making something available for the public to review this information, is that correct, or are they going online to review it?
Ms. Adouma is going to address that with you.
Okay, thank you.
We've scheduled a meeting for Wednesday, February twenty-second.
We've scheduled a meeting for Wednesday, February 22nd, in City Hall, sixth floor of City Council chamber. Staff has worked with various organizations, invited them out, and so we're anticipating various developers, community members to come out to this meeting. And we have some flyers that have been, it's on the internet and, and being published.
Thank you. And just to recap, you said Wednesday, February 22nd?
Yes.
Sixth floor, City Council.
There's a flyer right here.
Okay, what time?
What time?
Six.
6:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you, Julie.
If there's no other discussion, Madam Secretary, I believe this concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Madam Chair?
Commissioners, sir.
Could we have, maybe Ms. Jackson send out a reminder of that, so we can make sure we put that on our calendars?
Absolutely.
So we can attend. And then, I think the next question regarding that was one from maybe Legal. Do we have any such open meeting requirements, since there may be multiples of us in attendance?
So we sent out a legal ad to the newspaper that'll be published twice this Sunday and next Sunday, for every board and commission that the Planning Department does, plus the EDA, plus City Council, that this meeting was going to be happening, that no decisions would be made during this meeting. But we did publish a legal ad in the newspaper for the meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else today? Ms. Aduma, anything else?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.